Here we go. Uh, can I get a motion to approve minutes?
I'll go ahead.
Go ahead Jim.
I'll make a motion to approve the 1918.
Oh, second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, three nothing. Uh, approve the claims. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
On favor? Aye. Uh, approve the report of collections.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three oh, uh, review and acknowledge President's bank reconciliation report. Make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, three oh. Uh, APC board. Uh, appointment of Brian Harshfarter. Um. If I have any questions? He was put on by extension by Adam yet. We're good, alright, can I get a, a motion to approve? Brian? I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, three oh. Alright, we're all in the department heads. Good morning.
Very good.
Good?
Okay, and, um. Really don't have a lot about the department, I can't tell you in the work room that we wasn't sure if we were gonna get it the rest of our money. They did okay our county to get it, a lot of people's not getting it, so we will have that coming. Um, there is one thing, couple things I'd like to correct it. From last joint meeting. Um, there was seven, I just, uh, quit the flood plane, that is not correct. I, um, reached out to, well, actually talking with Amber first, she does permits, reached out to Aaron, discussed this, and then even offered to call. But it's only administrator. Which I'm correct is right. So, um. Flood plane, I know falls under the zone administrator, I have no problem doing the flood plane, it's just. Thought that's where it needed to be, um. So other than that, I mean, I don't know what the job title or the job description for the zone administrator is though now, but anyway. But I did agree, Aaron, I will continue to do the flood plan, but I did not drop the flood plan. That isn't how I work, so I want that. Stayed.
Yes. Um, I told you I would.
So the, yeah, so the next time anything like this happens, I'd like you to talk to all three of the commissioners. I mean, just.
Well, I.
And any, any, any department head, if they're gonna see.
Right, well, I'm the president, and so I give them, and.
I'm getting my, I'm, what he was talking to folk and do the request and.
Yeah, and that's fine, I just wanted it straight, that I didn't do that, that isn't how I work, so I, I wanted that taken care of. Another thing, um, the windows in the EMA office. I, um, didn't just, oh, it's my office, I don't intend it. Do I think it was necessary? No, like the guy putting up said, it's personal preference. So I said, well. I talked to, and again, the president before the guy came. And already had it kind of like, I'm not for sure if I really care for this. Um, then when I saw it done, I'm like. It's going to be dark in our office, so then he wasn't gonna do any, but I decided, let's just go ahead and do the EOC room, the ready room. We're not in there eight hours a day. Another thing is, our department does watch what goes on outside, weather wise. Or if you tell what the weather is, it looks like a storm. Seven days a week. In your office, so again, I didn't.
My issue was that was we paid for a bid to do all the windows.
But she didn't have enough money for all the windows.
Well, and that's, and Tina let me step in, that's where my decision was made, that the money did not cover. We didn't have a bid to cover everything that needed to be done, and.
The following windows?
Yes. The bid was, uh, four, five hundred dollars cheap.
See, I didn't know.
We didn't have all the windows, so I, I told her, see if. What did get her office done, if that would get the doors done that they didn't put in the bid, essentially, and it did, I said.
That didn't cover all, you probably did have to pay some more, but that did help.
So I said, and then we're not gonna worry about it from there, because we'll figure it out later, which is our conversation.
Yeah.
Which I should've said two weeks ago, but I did not, which is my fault, so.
Yeah, so I just want to get that straight, that isn't how I work, so it just was upsetting, and I wasn't here to open myself, so. I think that's all I. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Tina. Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Davis Tumaker, I'm the nine one one director for Baton Rouge Dispatch Center. I do apologize, I've been off for a little while, I've been working with council the nights and the days to help save money for the. For the, the county, um, and to make sure that we're running, um, we are not six, we're almost at one thousand right now. Until somebody answers, so just let me know I'm back. You guys have any, if anything to talk to, or any problems, or she please let me know. Um, I've been keeping up with my, as well as, as well as. Um, my part timer is down to his CMT course, so he is able to answer nine one ones, so we're still. Doing training with him, we didn't get him ship shapes, we need to come to take some of those, as well, or, um, any vacation days, like dates. Thanks guys, again, apologize for the absence, thanks. But thank you for our team.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning Greg.
Sheriff House. From Orlando. Uh, I want to let you guys know, I've already talked with sheriff, I've got people who seem to want to make that their own planer. So, uh, like I said, I've already talked to sheriff, we're gonna try to keep an eye on it. I'm gonna post, I've got signage, uh, I'm gonna repost, there's a couple more signs out there. Uh, I don't wanna have to get to the point where I've got a fence. I mean, by law, it shouldn't be probably fenced in, but it's not, but it's hard ground, if you would think people do it. Just want you guys to know. If you have a problem, and.
They're really coming in off the backside.
They come off fields, uh, the last one came in off that field that sold, you called me about the pile of rocks.
Yeah.
At the end of the pile of rocks, there was a small grass growing, but no rocks. Right through there, and it's still, they're still going through there, I was out there last week, that's Friday, and you can see that we, there's no.
Have you talked to that house?
It's, it wasn't that house, but. The people that were out there got caught, Tina caught them, and got names, so I turned to go with the sheriff.
Oh, okay.
Sheriff's area, so, but it's not the only one. I do have more coming in off of the backside, all the way to the back corner. Uh, I caught him back there, but I, I didn't catch my song, but they saw me in.
Okay.
Turned, took off, so.
I can tell you that the link was cut too, I can't verify they did it. But.
Yeah, that's, the chain on the, the actual solid waste gate, not my gate, but the solid waste gate, uh. About the chain that cut out to get it sold. So, I don't know who did that, but Steven Travis know about it, that's, I feel, that's always, uh. My gate not only had problems with locking improper between, uh, PMP and the contractors and all that, they. We had three locks on it, everybody's got their own lock, you gotta go each. They jumped a lock, and so, so we couldn't get in. But, uh, we gotta solve that, and it's just one of those deals, it's text coordination, but, uh, other than that, that's all I got out there. Going good, I've got a redo on the wells, uh, Roger will have to reshoot them, I gotta cut some of the pipes. The foundation based on the outside, that the housing is settling in the ground, so that means pipe sticks up, so you can't close the lid on the well. So I gotta re-cut them off, have to be resurfaced for elevation, and remark for north, and then. He goes to resurvey, and then Dave Joe can continue to do his sampling. So, but that's all that's really happening, as far as I look there. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Good morning Jay.
Good morning, so I just wanted to give you an update on that building, we did have. Uh, for a minute, I'm gonna look for the, the mole. Um, there is none to be seen at this time, but there are some other concerns that we need to address. Um, and I've not looked at that contract, um, for them, um, so I'd like to request that from Ethan to see what that entails, um. I know that, uh, that on the main, made comment that he will not be able to complete, um. Those, uh, things that he said that he would have done prior to our move in, and that would be something we would want done. So I don't, we wanna look at how to contract, and whether another company to do that, um, construction company to get that done in a faster manner. Um, that is something that we want done, as well as some of the other concerns that are. Look at. Well, that's on there.
I don't, I don't think. So.
Thank you.
I just want to be able to get us any questions about the APC appointment, so.
Everybody, everybody, alright, Jason done? Jason, come on, am I right?
He is.
Jason, are you on there?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have anything for us this morning?
I do not, uh, we're just getting the roads prepped to start paving, uh, probably not this week, since there looks like some rain, but, uh. We're just getting some stuff ready to go for, for that project out on Twin Lakes Road and Epperson Road. I'll add for you guys.
Okay, I don't have any questions for you, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. Let's just move on to the public hearings here, we'll start off with the nine one dispatch Florida position, we'll open it at, we'll say nine thirteen. Uh, and open the Florida public comment. Seeing that, I'm gonna close it. Say, closed at nine, nine fourteen. Um. Uh, and then we'll move to opening at nine fourteen, the health department building. Any public comment on? That? Good morning.
Yes, now, I'm talking to my resident, I'll put it on the Peter's bird, and just wonder if I can support, um, that I'll start with Peter's bird.
Thank you. Anyone else with concerns or anything? Alright, well, let's close it at nine, we'll say nine fifteen. Close the hearing. Um. As far as the funeral, taking place on Thursday, uh, Sessors Office will be closed. Be closing at noon, um, as far as courthouse wide goes, if anyone else. Uh, would like to leave at noon as well, we are all fine with that for the funeral. Um, just kinda leave that up to everyone in the courthouse, so. Um. Other than that. We'll move to public, the public comment.
I have to say things on Brian before public comment. First thing, I've been talking with Brad Frain, and he is going to annex, or try to annex. From city limits down to seventy four. And it's something that, once he gets rolling on it, probably will not take that long to do. At that point, the APC president or chairman will be in the city limits, so we'll have. And along the APC. Three or four months ago, they made a motion. They said that, uh. They talked about pulling the permit back. From Dolphin Solar. And I believe it was sent to the commissioners with no recommendation. Commissioners never made a recommendation either way, whether to pull it or. Or whatever, so we need to publicly. State. Whether the commissioners are in paper or not in paper. They'll pull them that permit, so we can.
I don't believe it was ever.
I, I never knew it was sent up to the commissioner. It was not formally ever sent up to the commissioner.
It sets.
You, you had a vote on it?
Yes, but it has to be formally sent up to the commissioners from the APC, and it was, that was never done, because.
Why couldn't you have a vote, you wouldn't have sent it to me?
We discussed it as the advisory committee.
Okay.
Wrote it on it.
Okay.
And then. The uproar started, so it was like, hold on, let's back up. Don't send it up to the commissioners. Hold them on to it, and that's, that's where it's at.
Alright. So for public? For the public? Do you guys believe that should be pulled? Or not?
For Dolphin?
Yeah, for Dolphin.
The APC's argument was sixty days, they had, well, it says in the contract, they have sixty days. Um. And I believe that's the gray area we're operating, so I'm, I'm not gonna say yes or no, um, because they're still talking with Roger. Um, Dolphin obviously thinks, um. They're within their means. Uh, so I, until.
And if you guys have any squirm over here, having a discussion over something, it's likely to lead to a pretty much, uh, from the directory. I just want to voice in the room, maybe you guys like watching this part.
I, I don't have an opinion on it until we have all the facts. So.
Well, I think we have all, we've had letters sent to us and everything else, these stuffs move on and be forgotten, but we can't seem to do that in this county.
I have a question, is this public?
Uh, and you did that, so.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Prior to our joint meeting. You were handed in a stack of envelopes from the attorney from GNX.
It's all letters, we've all already seen, there's one of you thinking, I thought, you know what, we've had them out, if you've seen them. It is what it is. I'll, I'll bring the next one in.
I would like to see them.
Oh, you've seen them?
Well, what were they prepared to see? If I see them, I might know what I see.
Alright, I'll bring in the uncast, and she is, Jane. It's a very popular.
Anyone else this morning? Alright, nope, no.
We think applied with Roger doing the request.
That's a, yeah, that's a question, I mean, Wayne.
They've done everything that they're supposed to do.
Carol. Is that right, Roger?
There's still technical comments that are still kind of out there that, um. They're working on, but the last, the last night, or said they were working on. It's been a long since, since there were any, any communication. They didn't say no to the comments, but. Not, uh, any, uh, any updates. For all of them.
I'm happy to speak to, any questions?
Were these comments that were arguing over these sixty days? Saying, was this stuff that was after the back that they came back for? Or was this stuff that was put up initially that they had already answered? That seems to be the great requirement, isn't it?
Comments were made, Roger, and you, you feel free to speak, um, the technicals that he's talking about are the ones that came with the conditional permit. Um, and that's what they're waiting on. I believe, I haven't seen everything since those, those technicals were put out. Um.
Uh, I'm not an attorney, it would be, but they, my point is. Dolphin has done everything. That are. That are, um. Or, ordinance sets. They've done no ordinance says, actually. They have done everything they need to get that permit and move on and build that solar farm. Period. And Roger's sitting there shaking his head, yes, it's technical stuff, some of the stuff they've been asked to do, they don't even have to do, but they've done some. Well.
Hey, go ahead.
I didn't, there was somebody just. So. Understand that, and I've tried to talk with several people regarding this. We, if I understand correctly, the technical review. The technical data. That, uh, Roger asked for. He said that it has to be. Provided prior to. According to his letter back to Dolphin. Has to be provided. Prior to groundwriting. Uh, because it's a conditional, conditional permit that has to be provided prior to groundwriting. Uh, so that hasn't been. Provided yet. My question then, and I'm not talking to Wayne or Roger, but. Uh, in response to the sixty day issue. The. Uh. The response from Rowan was that they have vested interest. And we can't take that away from them. Because of the vested interest. So my question comes that if the. Technical data isn't provided prior to the ground. Then does vested interest still apply? How will you, if you haven't, if you haven't provided it, and it's required. Will you claim vested interest? But yet, according to what I understand, is that you have the sixty days. The sixty days applies not to the application, but to the, is that correct, Roger? That the sixty days reply does not apply to the application, but to the technical data?
Oh, you possibly are.
Okay.
Uh, there's gonna be some attorneys in Indiana who's been a long time, you gotta figure that out.
Got it.
Either we figure it out between ourselves and Dolphin, or. I believe that there, or China, I mean.
So how far does it go? So how, so how far does it go with the? With vested interest? Issue? That, that's. The. Technical data has to be. Because it will, has to be provided. Prior to. Groundwriting. Before the project starts, right?
Probably answer shot on that. Number one. Dolphin, per the permits. Have done. Everything they're supposed to, period. Some of these things you're talking about are things that they don't even have to do. Roger shaking his head, yes, they don't have to, they're right, doesn't matter. Smoke mirrors.
Okay, so what is?
This, this, this part of the debate's over.
What, instead they don't have to?
Well, I don't know the particulars, but I know that they, by protocol attorney, they have done everything in the letters they sent to this county numerous times. They have said that they have done everything that they have to do, and they, that's their stance.
What is?
So we sat here and we talked about this, and talked about this, and it's, it's, you know.
The, the long and short is, when the ordinance was written, there were things that were not put into the ordinance, but the county requested that needed to be done. GNX was presented with the extra items that needed to be done, they were agreement to those items, they assured that. Our county, to our county, that those things would be done, they consulted with Roger, Roger ensured that those would be done, there were some technical things that Roger requested that they do. That he is still waiting on those final requests for those technical items, so basically what it comes back to is, our ordinance was so small, that it did not include things that needed to be done to protect this count. That's the long and short of it.
So I understand, there's a, there was a recent. Um. Decision made, and I believe it was Illinois, but it was several other states that, uh, somebody was. A company, a solar company, was, uh, building. Projects in those states. They did not provide. A particular. Uh, report data. Regarding, and if I remember correctly, it was environmental. Environmental networks, and they applied. Because they didn't provide, they didn't try, do prior to, it was.
Totally different situation, probably totally different zone of ordinance.
Okay, so can't compare these things. So, that's it, if it wasn't provided, wasn't done. But it was required by federal. Is that not? Does, if even our ordinance doesn't have, is, is it not applying for, to the. Uh, situation, if it's a federal situation, okay, and is that, is that a correct assumption?
No, the federal law applies everywhere, but.
So.
The federal law applies to all states.
All states.
Yeah, but I completely agree with that, this Illinois decision, I'm just telling you, I think I don't.
Yeah, that's right, it's why I was in several states, is why I understand that it runs.
Whatever. Getting Nancy back.
I would get, see the kind of ability to have this, where there's gonna spend a lot of money. Uh, something that. If I was cleaning up the work today, and I still thought, it said, did they meet the requirement of your ordinance? Uh, yes. So it seems to me that we're just putting ourselves in a position where we're gonna spend a lot of money to get back to, do they need the requirements of their ordinance? Yeah, we'll spot on. We have some weak ordinance, they have their requirements of the ordinance, they submitted additional information, we can't file the files. They can protect it, they can say, we're not the one submitting, we'll let it back. They have met their requirements of the ordinance, they have not met all the technical issue. As far as that was concerned, that's not our problem, they can go break federal law, but the facts command. That's why we have EPA, that's why we have PNR, that's why we have, we're talking all the other department. So, you know, do they need to do what on mitigation, absolutely.
You're saying again?
Do they need to do what on mitigation, find out what the weapons are, absolutely, the answer is yes, the right answer is yes. If they go destroy what then, can we do something about it, no, can the FAS do something about it, absolutely. But that's a permit they will secure from the federal government, or from the state government. But I honestly would hate for us to go all the way down to Indiana, thousands, maybe thousands, thousands of dollars, for somebody to come back and say, there's one point of fact. Did they meet the requirement of your ordinance? And as an engineer, I will send another person to say, yes sir, or yes ma'am. So I hope that, by requirement, significant issues.
Yeah.
It says it's up to Roger to approve it, and he has some problem with the technical, so he actively has not approved it.
Yes, he has. In writing. Signature.
They have a fair investigation, they have a completed application, they have a conditional permit based on the background. If they pull those technicals back to more that are not required by our ordinance, those technicals disappear. Or they can claim ice engagement, look for the county to provide those.
So the long and short of that is then, that was a request, that's not an ordinance requirement. He has the right to either get that information. Or not give you that information, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you just heard Roger say.
Yeah, that's why.
They went, so.
You know. This whole sixty day thing needs to go away, and.
Well, it really can't, because it's written in the permit. I will believe, or in the documents pertaining to the permit. I think.
The permit that was issued by Roger, that mentions no timeline, except for the timeline that Roger mentioned here, which is. Prior to construction, at a great ground. The sixty day landage is within nine point zero six of your general. That is a different section than the ordinance is applicable to the issuance of the conditional permit.
Well, to kind of clear things up on county statement, on the weak ordinance. Back when we were, back to number one, we were, APC backed together after it was. Dissolved, with no one mad, after the landfill, they kind of just lost interest. We knew the wind, so it was coming, so we put a, a board back together, and you all know how hard it is to get people to serve on a board, we had an excellent board at that time. But, uh, when we first began, Jimmy Keel, we brought up, well, you don't, you don't operate right, you don't have Democrats, you don't have this. When we started, we had in true independence, they had not. When we started, we had in true independence, they had not voted in in um. Two consecutive primaries. So they were not Democrat or Republican. But the thing of that being said. We had enough work time because on the eastern side of the county, everybody was going there. There was some salt to wind to look at the county. Well, I've told this story a hundred times too. Several people from that end of the county up there came and was just devastated about wind, blah, blah, blah. So as a board. Wasn't anybody on there that liked the fact trying to tell anybody what to do if they're landing this kind of new skill. The people with the junk yards in their yards and there are plenty of them. We only don't mess with this accounting because just generally don't want to go there. So because the uproar was with the wind at the time. We made it practically impossible to get wind. Now, if any wind company come in, challenge our ordinance. Like the the part that you have to have two certified phrases on every house and then five miles, they probably win that for an hour. Just none of them ever had. So well, point of story. We decided to make it and we asked those people who were in on paper when. Um what about solar? At the time. They said, don't stick two up, two or three hundred foot in there. Don't bother us. So we made it incredibly easy to get solar. We made it accessible to use in agriculture. Easy, that most user friendly format can stay. That's why it was the way it was. It wasn't because we were, didn't know what we were doing, blah, blah, blah. But I heard you, you brought up an APC meeting maybe that, you know, you were in favor of wind. I'm saying I I like wind too. If the new APC wants to lower the standards on wind, that'd be great. I mean. Anything bring. Tax dollars into this county, we should be doing. So. That's it.
I guess my intentions when I said weak ordinance. Was not the fact that we made it easy for the dictator. It's some things that weren't included. That should have been included for the protection of. Other things.
Yeah, no, it's kind of a strong environment by any means. So far, both companies have been really good about. Their setbacks and everything. So Dolphin actually went further in cases. I think Ranger asked it. Back on setback.
Wayne, if if your permit gets approved, when do you think your construction would begin?
It is approved.
At this point, the timeline says twenty twenty six to commence the construction. Given the footprint of the project, it's a twenty four to thirty six month build. So there'll be. I mean, the weather, other things that uh. Influence timing of construction, there could be other other items, but I would say twenty four, thirty six months of twenty twenty six is a projection start.
Sometime during that year or?
Correct.
They'll probably all build before twenty nine or thirty.
Yes.
As the project is.
The project has identified a liar, yes. As as we've long talked about, GNX is not an interoperator of assets like this. Uh project would be brought forward with a with a very uh. Detailed sale process. That liar would be announced uh in a couple of months. I mean, given twenty six is just right around the corner.
Yeah. Tim's motion closes for second, I'll say home favorite.
Thank you, everyone.